We started being quieter.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the January 16th, 2018 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. We do have a couple announcements and a presentation. I would like to remind you there are four public hearings tonight, and if anybody wishes to testify on any of the public hearings, forms are on the back, Diaz, please pick those up and fill them out and turn them into our clerk and we'll listen to you. On the announcement side, first of all, I should welcome Assistant Chief Knight, who is sitting in for City Administrator Shelley tonight, and so I told Pat if we had any difficult questions, we're going to direct them to him tonight. So feel free to put him through his paces and see how sharp he really is. And I'll punt those to Warren. Remember, he's armed, so with a taser. Post Falls Sanitation will be providing Christmas tree pickup for Post Falls residents on Saturday, January 20th. Christmas trees must be placed at the street, at the street before 6:30 a.m. in the morning of January 20th and must not exceed four feet in length and four feet in width. Any questions, please contact the city at (208) 777-4504 or Post Falls Sanitation at (208) 457-1820. I've seen the question asked, "If it's a seven-foot tree, can you cut it in half?" And I don't have an answer for that, so call those folks and they can tell you. The Idaho Transportation Department invites the public to attend a public hearing to learn about and give input on plans to reconstruct approximately four miles of State Highway 41 from Prairie Avenue North to Boca Road. The meeting will be held on January 25th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at their Court Lane office, 600 West Prairie Avenue. To learn more about project details, visit the city's website at www/postfallsidaho.org. The Post Falls Chamber is hosting the Community Recognition Gala on Thursday, January 25th from 5:30 until 8:00 p.m. at Red Lion Templin's Hotel. The Chamber partners with local non-profits to recognize individuals and businesses that are making a significant impact in our community. For ticket information, visit www-postfallschamber.com. And tonight, we do have a presentation, and it's by the Post Falls Police Department, Chief O.
Well, Mayor, Council, good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to recognize a celebrity that we have in our community. I want to, I want to start with this quick video. I had a bio that I wanted to read as I introduce this young man that we're going to recognize, but when I YouTube'd his name, I came up with a video that does a better job than I could. So I'd like to play this for you. It's about three minutes long, and introduce to you who we're recognizing tonight.
Hi, I'm Alex Knoll, and my favorite 12-year-old app developer.
Last season, we met an amazing 12-year-old who was developing an app with the goal of helping all people with disabilities from Post Falls, Idaho. Please welcome back the amazing Alex Knoll.
I'm so excited because I'm about to unbox the much anticipated iPhone X before it's released in stores. Let's do it. So I'm really excited to see the big new screen and the new OLED display, trying out the "an" emoji and the facial recognition. Okay, I'm so, so excited to open this. This is, this is a dream come true. Oh, goodness. I don't even want, this is just so, so perfect. I've noticed that it's just so smooth. If you run your finger all the way around, it's all smooth. So right now, it wants us to set up Face ID, so I will go and spin my face around. Okay, awesome. I'm going to try out Face ID for the first time, and it was that fast. Wow. I'm about to go behind the scenes in the control room, and I'm going to show everyone the iPhone X. Hi.
Good to see you.
iPhone X.
Oh.
Yeah, so you can make different emojis.
Oh, my goodness. Look, I'm a bunny. You're a bunny? Was doing what I do, yeah.
Hi, Tim.
Hi. How are you?
I'm wonderful. How are you?
Great. It's good to see you.
Yes.
Yeah, I like the Apple logo.
Yes, it got at the Apple event. Yeah, I still have that, yes. Love it.
It looks very cool.
Thank you.
I like the tie as well.
Thank you, yeah.
How's it backstage at the "Alex Show"?
It's awesome, yeah. Yes, here, I'll turn the camera around.
Hey, I see, I think I see a few Macs there.
Yes, yeah. Hi, Ellen.
Hi, Alex.
Hi, here's Ellen. Here's Ellen on FaceTime.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm doing great. How are you?
I'm good. Are you going to call the shots from here? You're in the control room. Are you going to take over the show today?
Do you mind?
Not at all, not at all.
Good seeing you, Ellen. Most of you are iPhone X.
Thanks, thanks. I'm getting an iPhone X. You know, I have a wife, Portia. She's going to get jealous, so maybe my wife would want a 10.
Oh, maybe two then.
Yeah, okay. Just saying. All right. And then I have some friends also. Whatever you want, you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Bye. Bye. Thank you. That was amazing. Got to FaceTime with Tim Cook and met Ellen at the same time. I can't wait to use my iPhone X, and I have a lot of amazing selfies to show everyone as well. Thank you, Ellen. This was amazing. Thank you.
Alex, could you come up?
Well, that's a little bit about Alex, who we want to recognize, Alex Knoll. And with all of this celebrity status that he's got on the "Ellen Show," he didn't forget his hometown of Post Falls. And Alex went out and raised $714 for the Post Falls Police Department K-9 team and presented that to us, I think in December, if I remember right. And so that money's going to come in handy for training and for supplies for the dog. So we just wanted to take a few minutes and recognize Alex for the great work and the generous donation that he provided to the police department and the city of Post Falls. So on behalf of the police department, we would like to give you this little certificate, signed by myself and the mayor, that just recognizes you. It's a certificate of appreciation for raising $714 in donations for the K-9 team. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
I know I've taken up a ton of time, but I think, can we come over here and just get a picture real quick?
It's important.
Congratulations, Alex. Great job.
Great job. Thank you, sir.
Good job. God, that job was...
Thanks, sir. Thanks for all your work.
Good to see you again, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex, and he's very politically correct. I don't know if you heard, I asked him who was funnier, Chief or Ellen, and he said it was about the same, so.
Good call. Good call.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks again, Alex. Are there any amendments to the, amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none.
Any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, Chief, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes, January 2nd, 2018 City Council Meeting. Item B, payables, December 23rd, 2017 to January 8th, 2018. Item C is Foxtail Third Edition Plaid. Item D, Crown Point Smart Code Amendment Addendum File Number SCA-17-02. And item E is the police department purchase of three police vehicles from Parker Ford.
All right, are there any questions on the consent calendar?
Three police vehicles?
That's what was approved. If none, I'd see a, entertain a motion.
Move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item of business is public hearings, and as I said earlier, we have four. The first one up is the Planned Unit Development Text Amendment. John Manley presenting. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council, John Manley, Planning Manager here at the city Post Falls. This has actually been put together with both Warren Wilson and myself. The project started in 2016. We solicited comments from developers. It wasn't just something staff put together and brought forward. We did listen through, through the years of implementing the PUD code, made some changes, proposed these changes to the development community, got some input, made some additional changes, and we're bringing that collective effort before you tonight. Honestly, I wish we had about three or four of the things we're bringing to you, but we're at the PUD point right now, which I'm grateful for that. So, so what was the goal of this? We wanted it to be evolutionary rather than revolutionary. So we wanted to retain the PUD process that's enabled through state code, but update it and obtain a better development result. We also wanted clarity and clear up some of the confusion. One of the things that happens with our current PUD is with the zoning, we'll get a PUD and we have single-family homes that are on commercial zone land, we have single-family homes that are industrial zone land. So was there a way that we can get some clarity from appraisals and the real estate market and with us as implementing the code and the residents? Also, we wanted to improve uncertainty. So by having some clarity on everybody's role, city staff, the code itself, and what are, and how it kind of works with the code, can give better certainty for people investing in projects as well as those implementing the code itself. Also, a streamlined process. So by having a streamlined process and with certainty, then we could potentially get more investments and improvements within Post Falls as well. So all in all, make the right thing the easy thing to do. So what we'll do is we'll go into the substantive changes, which I'll present those aspects of it, and then Warren will go into a lot of the procedural changes and how that affects the land use hearings. So one of the things we did with the new PUD process is we got a new definition. I know in the past, there's been parking areas, swell areas, things that wouldn't necessarily be considered open space was counted as part of that 10% open space calculations for PUDs. So in listening to some of that, we implemented that part into the code. So as I mentioned, it excludes swells, private streets, street-side stormwater swells, utility easements, required landscape buffers, setback areas, or the common parking areas, other than what would necessarily be in a park. So oftentimes, you need parking for open space, but if it's just to get extra credit so they can get some extra density, we wanted to make sure those things were happening. So in that, we would review a plan, and they would have to identify that. So when we look at a PUD, they were, they're going to have to clearly mark where all these areas would be for PUD approval. We also encourage coordination with other open space. There may be, up in By the Meadows is a good example of where two different subdivisions work together at the meadows and by the meadows to get that open space out in that area. So you can encourage collecting different open space through multiple PUDs to get a larger open space. Maintenance and dedication to the public include base maintenance requirements for private open space requires public open space to be dedicated with the first block of development unless otherwise agreed to. We've actually modified this a bit to where it would, they would propose this either as like an annexation agreement or with the PUD process, they would have the opportunity. But we also listened to, there was concerns that, that open space was getting done too late in the project, or we weren't getting it all. So we put that avenue in there for that. Conformity with the underlying zone, that kind of goes into the intro a little bit with clarity. So bring some certainty. So for Fieldstone, for example, where the apartments went in, use that. Where that went in, if, when the PUD was approved, it was originally in R3, so even though all those people built homes, they would know that the zoning district they got, there'd be some certainty when you bought your house that, that PUD was going to enable these other type of developments. And lead to less confusion at the end when either the multifamily came in and, you know, towards the end of the project. So they would need to be either in conformity with, through their conditional use permit or be permitted outright. So that would be specified clearly with the PUD approval. So you, they wouldn't have to come back later and do a special use permit. Density capped at the density allowed in the underlying zone. So this is to kind of mitigate some of those, like an R1S, for example, and they want to do high-density development in R1S, you'd have to at least get a zone that's compatible with the intent of what you want to do. And it's based on gross density. So you would, if you didn't, if that didn't work for you, then once again, you'd get the zone that would work for what you intended to develop. And then we did allow some increase in density. So if you added from a 10% open space, you would go to 15% open space, but you'd get a 10% increase. So for 100 acres, you'd get, what was that? So, let's see, for 10, 10% density increase, so for 50 lots, you get about like, sorry, my math's off right now.
55.
What's that?
55.
55. So I'll go kick it to Warren right now to discuss the procedural elements and how that will change and affect the PUD.
Before we jump into the procedural stuff, just step back for just a second. A couple of things that we're gaining that we don't currently have, as John mentions, is the certainty. Right now, someone can come in and propose any use in a PUD regardless of what the underlying zone looks like. So we do have areas where we have single-family homes developed in industrially zoned properties under a PUD, which creates some really interesting wrinkles down the road if somebody decides, hey, I want to do an industrial use in my subdivision. So you'd wrestle with that a little bit. I think we probably have the teeth to tell them no, but it, it falls back largely on what does your, your code say? And we'd, we'd end up wrestling with that. So now we're giving hopefully a little bit more certainty to the developer, you know what you're going to get, but also to the residents around it. They know that you're largely going to get the, the range of uses that are allowed in your zoning code. That's what you get unless you've gone through and asked for a zone change as well. Similarly, on the density, we currently don't have a cap on density in PUDs. You could have, as John said, an R1S zone property, you could come in and ask for 30 units per acre. And there's nothing stopping you from making that ask. Now, we would say your, your starting point is that, that essentially base density that you're going to get, which is the gross density across your development. So we're creating a cap. There is a way to go beyond that with additional open space. We thought that was a good compromise from where we're coming from right now, which is there is no cap. You can ask for anything. As we jump into the substance of what we're doing, the first step is, and this is something we'll probably see as we move into updating our subdivision code there as well, if we, if we're going to ask for will-served letters, we probably want to get those up front before we go through the approval process so that we know that they're going to be, be able to get the service. There's not been an issue here, but it, it creates a legal issue for us to wrestle with. We want to make sure that those, that those will-served letters come in at a timely point in the process. We're, and the final PUD process, right now, we have a process where you go through and you get your PUD approval through the hearing process, and then you go through another process coming back before the Planning Commission that essentially just looks at, are you doing what you said you were going to do? That's a process that staff is really capable of handling. There's no reason to bring that back through a quasi-public process unless they're making changes. And if they're making changes, then they need to go back through the hearing process. That's one place where we can streamline a little bit, gain some efficiency, save some staff time, save developer time, and not, and essentially still get the same product at the end of the day. We've adopted new approval criteria that really catered to trying to make sure that we're getting the park spaces that we want, that we're getting functional streets, ped bike systems. One of the things that the Planning Commission asked us to add was a, a finding addressing private infrastructure, so you have a private road. Is there, are you building into your CCNR's capacity to make sure that you can replace that and repair that down the road? And so we've, we've tried to make sure that we're getting quality development and also development that will sustain itself over time. Going to the next screen, John. Giving a little more, going back to the 30,000-foot level, our current processes on legislative, quasi-judicial and administrative processes are a bit of a muddle. They're in the same code and sometime, and so you'll have a code change, like what we're doing tonight, is a legislative process, but it's also addressed in our quasi-judicial code and our city code. So we're trying to divide that out and make sure that it makes sense and speak to them separately. What we're proposing is a legislative process, which would be amendments to the subdivision code, amendments to the zoning code, amendments to the comprehensive plan, would go through a hearing at Planning Commission and a hearing at the City Council. Right now, we require a hearing at Planning Commission, but you may or may not get a hearing at the City Council unless a certain number of people show up to testify either in opposition or are neutral, or John thinks we should have one, or the mayor thinks we should have one. So you, when people ask, what's the process, we're left saying, it depends. We'll see who shows up at the hearing. I think this is part of getting clarity. We know what the process will be. On quasi-judicial matters, what we're proposing is, our current system is obviously, actually we have a couple different processes. Special use permits and variances, those are approved at the Planning Commission level. They don't come up to the City Council unless there's an appeal. For subdivisions, for PUDs, there's a Planning Commission level hearing and then a new business item at the City Council, which is again, a different process for half of the items. And then part of the things we've wrestled, I think you saw it recently with one of our controversial PUDs, is people at this level want to speak to you. They want to actually have a chance to interact with you and tell you their piece, but if it's a new business item, they don't really have that opportunity to, to speak to you and let you hear what they're thinking. So our proposal is to have, on quasi-judicial matters, all, the decision made at the Planning Commission, their decision is final unless there's an appeal. If it's an appeal, it comes forward to the City Council, who holds a new hearing. That gives you the chance to weigh in on those controversial items, and it gives the citizens a chance to, to actually speak to the final decision maker and, and make their case to you. The end result of that is you probably see fewer items, but the items you see are going to be more controversial and they're going to be a little bit longer. That, that would be the trade-off there. Moving on a little bit, let's see. I think I touched on some of those current issues with our current process. This, I think, will give us a better code. I think it gives us some clarity. It also will help us, I think, speed some processes in some places and free up some staff time to focus on hopefully some, some more important issues. And that's, that's it. Happy to answer any questions, either substantively or procedures, whatever you've got.
Linda?
I just have one question regarding an appeal. I was looking for what the criteria is for a person to be able to appeal a decision made by the Planning Commission and then brought to council on our consent agenda or under new business where the people don't get to testify. So what, what are, what is the criteria to be able to appeal a decision?
Currently or in, under the proposed code?
Under the proposed code.
So under the proposed code, there really isn't a criteria. You, you essentially, you file your letter saying you want to appeal. There's an appeal fee that you pay, and that gets you on the docket for a new hearing. It's essentially, then the, the City Council's going to make the same, review the same criteria that the Planning Commission reviewed. You also have the option, if you don't want to do a, what we call a de novo hearing, you could do an appeal on the record, which we would then change our draft to say that they're going to have to identify the specific deficiencies that they are, that they're saying in the decision below. It wouldn't be a public hearing at this level in front of the council then. It would just be someone essentially making an argument as to why they think the decision was wrong, rather than revisiting all the approval criteria. Those are both options. I tend to like the de novo hearing better because I think it gives us a chance. If there becomes an issue below, we can address it and fix the issues when it comes to City Council, rather than waiting for an appeal. But I'm open to either process.
Who has standing to file an appeal?
Essentially, any affected party.
What's the fee to appeal?
I said it's a couple hundred bucks? I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I don't know it off the top, I believe it is right around a couple hundred bucks.
The interesting thing is the way our code is currently written, we don't get a lot of appeals because the decision is made at the City Council level right now after, as a new business item, and it doesn't really make much sense to appeal to the City Council a decision made by the City Council. So we're, you just don't see it. So staff doesn't really, we have the fee, it's built into our process, but it never gets utilized.
But it may get utilized more often now that...
Yeah, this would, this would make it, it would be utilized more often.
What does the fee cover?
Pardon?
What does the fee cover?
Essentially, it's the, the notification costs.
Comment first. I really appreciate the work you guys have done because I know that when I was on planning and zoning and since I've been here, these PUDs are, you know, have lots of stumbling blocks, so I really appreciate cleaning these things up. I know we don't get these a lot, but a lot of effort went into it, and I appreciate it tremendously. Couple of questions. The definition on open space, is that going to carry over to open space in subdivisions and everywhere else within our code? Okay. And then, when, I know you said you worked with developers, it seems like everything that's changed is in our benefit, you know, as opposed, I mean, did you guys have to arm wrestle these guys or what? Um, not really. We sent out the draft code to a long list of people who do development, and we received their red lines, and then we looked at it internally and assessed. One of the things that came out of it was, like, open space, initially, it was first block of development, and then we had someone comment, and so we said, well, let's let the City Council or what the, whatever that mechanism is, an agreement or whatnot, allow it to, maybe it does make sense second or third. Maybe it doesn't necessarily have to be the first. So there's those times, those types of concessions that we kind of looked through the code and made some minor tweaks. There really wasn't anything that I recollect, that Warren maybe can chime in also, that was really going to turn this into a completely different direction.
Yeah, I just, I just thought the 10% rule, you know, with the redefining of the open space would have raised a lot of, you know, eyebrows anyway from the developers, but...
It has the potential to, it makes them essentially put forward a little more real estate.
Yeah.
For the open space. They're not going to get credit for, for parking or some of those other things that we've seen. I think that's a, a net. I think frankly, we didn't hear much pushback on that at all. I think people understand the concept.
Okay. Last comment. I'm not a real big fan of the fee. I just feel like that last time we had a discussion about the PUD, I wouldn't want that to be a stumbling block for our citizens to, I mean, I understand there's a cost in re-notifying, but I think we should give, you know, kind of open that up, and if they, if they've got a legitimate gripe about a PUD that they should not be burdened by that, that fee, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but...
It's diff, it's difficult from my point of view to determine who's got a legitimate beef and who doesn't. You can get someone that has got a legitimate beef, what you would consider, I would consider, and then you could have someone that's just basically didn't want to see any development, could appeal every decision.
Well, that's, I guess it goes back to like what Warren was saying, and they have to be...
Affected?
Affected party. You know, if, you know, somebody's up on the Highlands and this is happening out, you know, somewhere else, you'd say, no, you don't, you're not affected.
I will say the definition of an impacted, or impacted party is, is pretty broad.
Okay.
And, and part of the reason why you have a, a fee is, you want to recoup your cost, number one, but...
Yeah.
You also want to make sure that people are serious about what they're doing. I will say that if somebody doesn't have the, the appeal fee, they didn't, they simply, it's beyond their means, we're going to take care of it.
Okay.
It's not, I think we have a due process concern if we tell somebody that it's going to cost you 200 bucks and they tell us, I don't have 200 dollars, we now have a due process concern, so we're going to, we're going to address that.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to testify? Thank you. PUD text amendment, wishing to testify in opposition, Bob Flowers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I, there are several problems that I see with this, and I'm going to address the one that I believe is almost, let's say, damaging. And I, maybe damaging isn't the right word. The people of Post Falls elected you folks...
Affected party. You know, if, you know, somebody's up on the Highlands and this is happening out, you know, somewhere else, you'd say, "No, you don't, you're not affected."
I will say, the definition of an impacted, or impacted party is pretty broad.
Okay.
And part of the reason why you have a fee is, you want to recoup your costs, number one, but you also want to make sure that people are serious about what they're doing. I will say that if somebody doesn't have the appeal fee, they simply, it's beyond their means, we're going to take care of it.
Okay.
It's not, I think we have a due process concern if we tell somebody that it's going to cost you 200 bucks and they tell us, "I don't have $200," we now have a due process concern, so we're going to, we're going to address that.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to testify? PUD text amendment, wishing to testify in opposition, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. There are several problems that I see with this, and I'm going to address the one that I believe is no most, let's say, damaging. And maybe damaging isn't the right word. The people of Post Falls elected you folks to your offices because they trust and respect you. They know that if you make a decision that they do not agree with, well, they elected you, but they also have the power of the vote to unelect you. And this, as far as I'm concerned, is giving, turning your power over to them, is basically the proposed new, the proposed new process for all quasi-judicial matters, subdivisions, PUVs, variances, special use permits, site-specific zone changes, will still require a public hearing before the public or the Planning Commission. The commission's decision will be final, unless somebody who... goes through the appeals. In other words, lives close to there. I believe that an affected party, they could even call that the people within 300 foot of a particular project, because that's all they bother to notify. If a taxpayer wants to do anything about it, and he might live on the other side of town, he ain't got no right to appeal it. Well, I'm sorry, we elected you folks to make that decision. We elected the council. We did not elect the P&amp;Z commission. They are appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. And I believe that this is taking a step away from public comment, a public hearing that should happen. We've seen it several times in the past recently, where the council has not agreed with P&amp;Z's decision. Now, eventually, they finally did after two or three hearings. I'm talking about the development out there by the meadows. It took multiple public hearings before the developer finally brought his development within standards. And without the hearing from or by the City Council, that would have been approved the first time through with 97 homes going in there. I just, I don't agree with it. The second part on this is the give-back on these PUDs. They use a real good example with R1S, makes the numbers even. But what if that happened on a development that wanted, say, R1, five units per acre? They gave 10% property, they can build 50 more houses in that. In other words, they're going to condense these lot sizes down to next to nothing. I'm about out of time, folks, so have a good evening. Please consider what I said.
Thanks, Bob. Next, no. Next up, Barry Rubin, in opposition.
Good evening, Barry Rubin, Post Falls. My opposition centers around the procedural issues discussed, rather than any technical items concerning with zoning or PUDs or anything like that. Before I get into the meat of my argument, I noticed in the memorandum, the term of a position called zoning administrator, and I will express my ignorance and say, "I have never heard of that position in all the time I've been coming to the City Council." Who is the zoning administrator and what do they do?
I believe our zoning administrators are city administrators.
It's actually our planning manager.
Planning manager?
It's defined in our city code.
Yeah.
Okay, that answers, that answers that one. Now, under the discussion section of the memorandum dated 10 January 2018 from Manley and Wilson, quote, "Staff has solicited input from developers and engineers who were in the community in preparing this draft," unquote. That seems a bit one-sided in the solicitation effort. I think it might have been nicer, or as an adjunct to that solicitation effort, if perhaps solicitation from the general public might have been asked for as well. Seems a little bit one-sided, but I suppose that's a matter of opinion. On the process issues, quote, "This process has proved cumbersome. Can somebody clarify in what manner?" Democracy, representative democracy is a cumbersome animal to begin with, and I don't think because something is cumbersome necessarily negates its value, i.e. in this case, or e.g. in this case, a hearing before planning and zoning and then a hearing before our elected representatives. I would reiterate what Mr. Flowers said, and I spoke to something of this nature regarding judicial review and the EPA, et cetera, et cetera. Some of you may remember that hearing. It is incumbent, and I use that term in a couple of different senses, for the citizens to be able to come before their elected representatives at every possible moment to instill a healthy democracy. It really is immaterial and irrelevant if it takes one hearing or two hearings in order for people to stand up before their representatives and say, "Yay, no, I don't know, I don't care," or whatever else they have their mind regarding an issue. If we circumvent that ultimate power, we're shortchanging ourselves. I do not want appointed bureaucrats telling me, in essence, how my city is going to develop. And as we saw in the last election, growth and development was the preeminent issue of that election, decided by seven votes, regardless of who you agreed or disagree with. I am firmly opposed to giving P&amp;Z the ultimate authority. As far as the appeals process, everybody is an affected person or party in the city, because if you have growth, it's going to ultimately affect everybody. So everybody should have the right to speak in front of their representatives at a hearing. My time is up, so I thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Right. With that, do you care to rebut anything, John or Warren?
Let's speak to a couple of things. First off, the idea of being able to speak to your elected representatives. First, I want to make it clear that the local land use planning act clearly authorizes this process. This is something that's done in lots of cities in the state. That doesn't necessarily make it the right thing for Post Falls, but this is something that's legally authorized. There's no requirement that you have a public hearing at both levels. I also think we need to remember that currently, our process now, you only get the one hearing at Planning Commission. What's happening is you're having a new business item in front of the City Council for half of the quasi-judicial matters, not all of them, just half of them. And in that process, the public doesn't get a chance to speak and address their elected representatives. It's, that's just not built into our process. You're basing your decision based essentially on the record that was created at the Planning Commission. This process would change that. This process would give people the ability to speak to you and for you to listen to them and make a decision based on the record that you create at your level, not essentially trying to make a decision based on the record that was created by the Planning Commission. So I actually think you're going to have more hearings. The legislative matters, that's explicitly clear, because right now, you get the one hearing and then maybe a second hearing, depending on how many people show up to testify. Now you're going to get two hearings regardless. So I think we're actually increasing the number of hearings, or the opportunity for people to address their public representatives, Carrie?
So before council, coming before council is only in the appeal process?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah, so it's only an appeal, but what you're getting, instead of currently on a subdivision, what you're getting is it's a new business item, the public isn't allowed to speak. The planning staff tells you what the Planning Commission did with that item, you take a look at it, you make a decision based on their record. But it's not a hearing. People don't have a chance to speak to you. What you would get now is you would get that hearing. People have the ability to now speak to the City Council and present what they think is important about the item.
If they paid a $200 appeal fee?
Again, and, yeah, there is an appeal fee. As I said, if it becomes an issue where people cannot afford it, that's a due process concern that we're going to have to deal with, and we will, we're not going to stop people from having an appeal based on not having the money to pay the fee.
I think I may have misunderstood what, in a sense, when things come to the council, obviously one is on appeal. Two, the way I interpret it was that the P&amp;Z has the ability to unilaterally approve a subdivision or a PUD if, and only if, it meets all of the rules that are written into that, into that zone. If it doesn't, if there's any kind of variance at all whatsoever, and they approve it with the variance, that still has to come with us, appeal, come to us, appeal or no, correct?
Yes, and I'll speak to that in just a second. So, and you sort of led me where I wanted to go next. The quasi-judicial process is different than a legislative process. While it's true that this is being heard in front of the City Council, you're sitting as judges when you're hearing quasi-judicial matters. It's not a political process. The state code makes it clear, due process makes it clear, that you're essentially applying facts to approval criteria. That's your role. This isn't a political process in that context. And so, the idea of being able to speak to your elected representatives, it's kind of a red herring in that regard. I do think it's helpful and it's good to have a way for people to express concerns about a decision reached below. I think it's important to have that appeal process. But it's not like you can disregard the approval criteria based on how many people show up to testify against something. If it meets the approval criteria, it meets the approval criteria. I think maybe that's speaking to what you're talking about. The Planning Commission isn't free to approve something that's substandard and doesn't meet our requirements.
Yeah, so you were just explaining it from the other side of the coin, but, so if, for example, somebody, a developer, wants a variance to the underlying zone to be able to put 30 units in an R1, and P&amp;Z accepts that variance, it still has to come to us anyway, right?
What would, what would happen in that context is, we wouldn't even take the application. If it doesn't meet the, if it's sort of clear on its face that you, it's something that can't be done, what would end up happening is, we'd see you'd need to make a change to the code, which starts a different hearing process, which would then come to Planning Commission and then to you. If the code change is approved, then they can apply for their application.
What about conditional use permits, that sort of thing?
And essentially, yeah, they have to meet those criteria. And currently, those ones aren't coming to you because the final decision is at the Planning Commission level.
Okay, John?
Yeah.
Linda?
So basically, the bottom line to this, if I'm understanding it correctly, anything that met the criteria and was not opposed by anyone who was being affected, it would pass through planning and zoning and not come to council. Right now, like you said, it comes to council, but only in new business, where even if somebody didn't like what planning and zoning said, they have no opportunity to stand up and say their piece at the City Council meeting.
And we've had that happen recently.
Yes, I know.
A controversial PUD where people were very adamant that they wanted to speak and they couldn't.
Right.
And we can't even legally consider that, correct?
And you couldn't, because it's outside the record. You couldn't consider it.
And so then, this is actually better for the citizens, that the things that are non-controversial would pass through planning and zoning as long as they meet the criteria. If anyone wants to appeal, and I think these gentlemen are correct, any citizen, no matter where they lived, in the city of Post Falls are going to be affected, if they're going to be affected, you know what I'm saying? I mean, anybody, even if they lived at the Highlands and the situation was happening at the Meadows, if they feel like they're affected, they're affected.
You're largely correct. As I said earlier, it's a very broad definition, and essentially, anybody who comes in is going to be an affected party.
And so that if we approve this, the citizens are actually getting another chance to come to council that they don't have right now.
And the way I see this is, controversial issues, you're going to see more, and you're going to, and the people who are showing up now have an ability to speak to you and talk about the issues. The ones that are not controversial, they'll stop at the Planning Commission, and it'll be, and it'll be completed at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's going to be one of those things where...
Can I interrupt you one second? I'm going to close the public hearing, because it sounds like we're getting into discussion.
Discussion, okay.
So I'm going to close the public hearing? Go ahead now.
Yeah, I just, I think it opens up, I mean, I appreciate what Barry and Bob brought forth, because I wouldn't want to see that either, but in this case, I think it actually opens it, an opportunity up for our citizens to have a voice, because I felt really kind of, I felt bad in that last situation, where those people came to this council meeting and we couldn't even hear what they had to say. I would have liked to have heard what they had to say in that regard. This will allow them to do that. But at the same time, if it's just can of corn stuff that nobody's got any complaints with and it meets all the criteria, it's done, and it doesn't have to come to us. So I see it as a positive. And I like all the other little changes in there too, as far as the open space, so...
You know, what I liked about it, outside the procedural side of it, I like the definition of open space. We've had that discussion in the past. I like the timing of the open space, you know, where, again, I think we saw that in a major subdivision here, where it probably should have put in, been put in 10 years ago. It's finally getting around to being put in. And I like the limitation on the density. So if you're going into a subdivision or a development and it's limited to 100, they have an opportunity to maybe change it, but not to exceed that total density. And I think what we've seen in the past is, people come in and say, "Well, I want to take the last X number of lots and put in multifamily, for example," and totally blows it, pre, priorly, prior approved density level out of the water. So I think the limitation is very good. Any comments? Do we need a motion now, or is that going to come forward?
So, our plan was to have the hearing tonight and hear your comments, and then bring the ordinance back next week in case you had any amendments. So we'd bring the ordinance back to you in two weeks.
John? I just want to make one more clarification. It's more of a perception of the process, and I did say that we did solicit comments from the development community. We also did a workshop regarding this subject matter, which was open for people to come in. So it wasn't just solicited to the public, I mean, to the development community, it was also an open workshop, that we could have also gotten comments from the general public as well. So just a clarification I wanted to make.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, John, how many people were there from the general public then?
I don't recollect.
Not too many.
But they did have an opportunity to...
Yes.
Amen to that. Yeah, thanks, John. Okay, so come back to us at a future meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting.
Thank you. Next public hearing is the Green Meadows Annexation. Tavis is going to present, and I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, council members. Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls. I'm presenting the Green Meadows Annexation this evening. It's case file A-17-04. The property owners are Green Meadows LLC, which is made up of Howard Rude and Tony and Lindsey Rude. The applicant is Furtis, and they are here this evening and will speak after myself. The requested action this evening is to review the annexation request, determine that the requested single-family residential, the R1 zoning, conforms to the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, and approve the proposed annexation with the R1 zoning designation. This proposal was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 12th, and at that commission meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for the single-family residential R1 zoning. Shown here in the red crosshatch is the project, the proposal location. This is up north Greens Ferry. We have the new Greens Ferry Elementary in this area right here. And then this is Kildere going east-west, and Prairie is up here at the north end. So it encompasses two sides of Greens Ferry and two sides of Kildere Lane. This shows the zoning within the city limits. All of the yellow is R1, single-family residential. We've got a little bit of red that's spilling in on the east here, and that is commercial, it's Community Commercial Services, CCS, and that's spilling over from the Highway 41 corridor that's, would be approximately in this area right there. And then all the white is areas that are within the Cootney County jurisdiction. And then all the white is areas that are within the Cootney County jurisdiction. This is a screenshot of the future land use map showing within the Cootney County area. So it's really pale yellow here and it's just designated as residential. We've got a little bit of red down in this area that would be designated as commercial and this is from, so from the comprehensive plan, the future land use. Overall, the project is about 31 and a half acres. Currently, it's used as large lot, single-family residential. The proposed zoning is single-family residential R1. Water would be provided by the Ross Point Water District and sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. Staff within the Public Services Department reviewed this proposal. We found it to be within the Post Falls area of city impact. It is contiguous with the city limits. It is consistent with the future land use map. And then staff went in and within the staff report, there's an analysis regarding with the reviewing with policies with the comprehensive plan, with the transportation plan and with the wastewater reclamation plan. So within the staff report there, regarding like the transportation master plan, the roadway classifications are sufficient at this time to meet the needs of potential development and the wastewater reclamation master plan, the city would have capacity to serve future development at the site. And the R1 zoning designation is consistent with the surrounding areas. We did receive some comments from other agencies. Cootney County Fire and Rescue, their comment was that they're neutral regarding this proposal. And the Post Falls Highway District did submit some comments. They were pretty detailed and they were relating to the right-of-way on Kildere Lane and Greens Ferry, just ensuring that we have enough of that and that we are taking, that all of the area adjacent is being annexed into the city limits of Post Falls and that we're not leaving adjacent right-of-way and under their jurisdiction. At this time, I'll stand for any questions you would have of me.
Questions, Tavis, go ahead.
You mentioned the chunk of Greens Ferry Road between the proposed annexation and our city limits, that was brought up by the highway district. So what's the, what's the solution? Are we going to go ahead and annex that in because it doesn't look red right there?
Yeah, so that's something that staff were still having, we're working with the engineering staff and the transportation master plan there to see if that's something that at this time, it's feasible for us to do that and we would have, we would be working, the city would be working directly with the Post Falls Highway District regarding that and not necessarily with this applicant regarding that.
Okay.
Questions, John, or Tavis?
Counselor Wolf, a quick aside on that, under state code, the annexation statutes, it drives that at that point in time when you have annexed the real estate on both sides of the right-of-way, you annex the right-of-way at that point in time. So for that little tail, the state code wouldn't drive it. That doesn't mean that we couldn't necessarily do it, but it's something we'd have to work through and if this applicant didn't bring that in, so we'd have to talk about annexing just that little sliver, which then you have to worry about shoestring annexations and those kind of things. So we're, we're working through it.
I guess I would just, it's my feelings towards staff, is whatever we can do to fix that and even the north piece so that, it just, you know, I hate having these little one-off things out there.
Sure, and at a practical level, nobody's going to pick up their blade on a snowplow and set it back down when they get to city limits. Those things are done largely through horse trading.
Right, okay. Cool.
Shannon, anyone wishing to testify?
Does the applicant have to speak first?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to, you're right, thank you. We have, the applicant wishing to testify, thank you, thank you Shannon. Were you puzzled me there for a minute because I messed up again?
I thought you were going to skip me.
Never, at least not intentionally.
Wait, did I just push this?
Yeah.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Stephanie Blaylock, I'm a land use planner with Verdis and I'm here representing the property owners, which is Green Meadows LLC and then Tony and Lindsay Rude. The subject property that we're requesting the annexation on is made up of the three parcels that Tavis showed located on Greens Ferry Road and Kildere Lane. They total approximately 30 acres. We're requesting the single-family residential R1 zone and they are contiguous to city limits. The annexation request is considered a logical extension of the city as stated by the planning department in their agenda report. And this is just a picture of the property. We're requesting the single-family residential R1 zoning designation, which is consistent with the conventional future land use map for this area. The R1 designation is appropriate since the properties are close to a minor arterial, which is Greens Ferry Road. R1 is consistent with the goals and the policies of the comprehensive plan as outlined in the agenda report. This is just a picture at Greens Ferry and then Kildere Lane. Benefits of the annexation request, it provides a critical area for pedestrian access, which in turn provides opportunities for the local kids in the area to walk to school since the subject properties are only a quarter mile from the Greens Ferry Elementary School. The property owners will dedicate and the city will receive the much-needed rights-of-way along Greens Ferry Road and Kildere Lane for the future improvements. It increases the availability of land and inventory within the city limits in an area that has seen a significant increase in development of single-family residential neighborhoods in recent years, as you will see in my next slide. This is just an exhibit, we took seven of the closest subdivisions to the subject property. This just indicates a trend for the area is residential neighborhoods, especially as the city's population continues to increase. So our parcels, the subject properties outlined in yellow and then there's seven highlighted in other colors. There have been no public comments received in the file. The planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed annexation request on December 12th. The annexation is a benefit to the city, the residents and to our property owners and I thank you for considering our request. Do you have any questions?
Oh, good.
I have a question. Right across the street, if you want to go back to the map, there's three adjacent properties that would have made this an even bigger block. Do you know if those property owners were contacted and asked if they wanted to annex?
We actually sent letters to 34 residents surrounding this area. We received four back. Three were interested in it, but they just decided they didn't want to join for, I guess, financial reasons, they didn't want to go forward with it. One was opposed, but he wasn't contiguous. And actually, we met with Mr. Haug, his dad, on the property and he was one of the property owners to the south. They just decided they didn't want to participate.
Okay, I'd just like to see big chunks.
Yeah, and we, like I said, we did try at the request of Tavis. He asked us to contact the surrounding neighbors.
Great, thanks, thank you. That's all I got.
Who else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, are there any? Thank you for keeping me on the straight and narrow. Wishing to speak neutral, Kelly Reed. Name and add, don't need your address, just name for the record, please, Kelly.
Mayor, council members, this is Kelly Reed. I am one of the property owners directly to the north on the west side of that sliver. Our only concern, and actually the three other property owners are here as well, our concern is the four properties are all provided well, or there's a single well that actually provides water to the four properties. And our concern is what happens to that property? So once this, if this does go into an annexation, what happens?
So you're provided well, well water from one of the properties being annexed?
Correct. No, yes, actually no. So the well is on the property that is furthest north, that is there on Prairie, and that provides water to all four properties. So it is a shared well that was put in back in originally, back in the 70s when that property was originally developed. So the property furthest to the south, the Rude property, is supplied water from that single well. As it states right now, each one of those four properties has a quarter interest in the well. I just want to know, make sure that nothing is going to impact our three properties as all three of us want to continue to stay in an environment where we can raise cattle, we can do what we want to with our property.
Well, could you talk to that, what the legality would be?
So, there's nothing I can think of that would impact that. I mean, it's, as long as they're not annexing in, they're not going to be required to hook to the city system. So they may need to have an easement to protect their line serving, you know, across that property, but I'm assuming that that's in place. I, without knowing more, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
Rob, by looking at the...
The well is actually to the north, the property is to the north, so it comes all the way down through the other properties and then finally, the last property would be the one.
Rob, just got a comment?
Just to interject real quick, Robert Paul's Assistant City Engineer. That area is not in the area of the City of Post Falls water system. That area would be surrounded by Ross Point Water and they would need to discuss with Ross Point Water if that property is annexed into the city and was then developed, what would be the implications of that? But I'm not aware of anything that would directly impact them having to go off of that well because they are in Ross Point Water.
Right, I mean, it's our, our complete assumption is that if that property were to be developed, we would just cut the water off from the well that serves that final piece of property and then the three property owners are fine with the continued sharing of the well. That's, that's our biggest concern, is that just nothing negatively impacts us that way.
I appreciate it. Sounds like we see nothing that would at this point. Linda, you had a comment?
I was just going to ask you if you have a shared well agreement with the neighbors that are on the well.
The, the original well, when it was put back in the, in the mid 70s, each property at that time was given a quarter interest in the well. So as the properties have changed hands over the years multiple times, the new owner basically assumes that quarter interest. So that's why I know that property furthest to the south has a quarter interest in that well. If things were to change as far as the zoning and now it becomes a developed property, it is no longer a single-family residence serving the one property, what happens?
It would be Ross Point serving that, yeah. So it shouldn't not, shouldn't have any impact on you.
Okay, so that's the only thing that we just want to keep in mind.
Good, appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for taking the time. I don't know if we need to rebut anything, Tavis? The applicant? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
I would move to approve Green Meadows Annexation File Number A-17-04 with an R1 zoning.
Second. Motion in delayed seconds, further discussion?
I do have a, for Mr. Wilson on, on the last point, so if the deeds to those four properties each include a quarter interest of the well and you take away one of the, one of the four, then you've got three properties with a quarter interest in a well, which is three-quarter interest. How does that?
You know, I'd have to see the deed, see what that looks like. I, I would hesitate to answer without looking into it a little bit more.
But that's something that would probably have to be changed in the...
Yeah, and there may, if there's an agreement, that's another thing that you'd need to know because if it's just by agreement, they can renegotiate and figure out what that looks like.
Hopefully it's by agreement, not by deed.
Yeah, and that's really, I don't see anything here that's going to impact them. It shouldn't impact them.
Something that's fixable regardless, right?
Yeah, and it's something they can address. Yeah, I, without seeing it, I'd really be, yeah, reaching out to touch on something that's...
I know, I'm not asking for, for an exact, my question is, is something that's, that's definitely correctable?
Oh, yes, certainly.
Okay, that's, that was my only, all right.
Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next public hearing is the Chase Acres Annexation. Tavis, again, open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President Wilhelm, council members. Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner, presenting the Chase Acres Annexation, case file A-17-06. Property owners, J.T. Holdings LLC. The applicant this evening is Big Sky Capital, represented by Mike Curry. So the requested action is to review the annexation request and determine that the requested single-family residential R1 zoning conforms to the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan and approve the proposed annexation with the R1 zoning designation. This annexation was also heard at the December 12th Planning and Zoning Commission and they did recommend approval of the single-family residential zoning designation at that hearing. This project is located on Chase, Chase Road, right here, just south of Prairie and just a little bit north of Fisher. Fisher runs right along in this area. And it is made up of two parcels, about approximately five acres each. This map shows the zoning within the city limits. The dark or bright yellow is single-family R1 zoning. The pale yellow over on the west side is R1S. Up here, we've got Crown Point with some of the smart code zoning. And then right here, this dark brown is along Spokane Street and it's a residential mobile home park zoning. And then all of the white is Cootney County jurisdiction and we've got a island or a pocket in this area that's outside of the city limits. This map shows the future land use from the comprehensive plan. The subject site is outlined in red and this just shows that the pale yellow is residential zoning, residential use within the future land use map. The green in, on the east is public reserve or institutional and that's the golf course. So the project size is a little over 10 acres. Currently, there's a large lot, single-family residential use. Proposed zoning is single-family residential R1. Water is to be provided by the East Green Acres Irrigation District and sewer to be provided by the City of Post Falls. Staff within the Public Services Department reviewed this proposal, found it to be within the Post Falls area of city impact. It is contiguous with the city limits. It is consistent with the future land use map of the residential use. And the analysis within the staff report regarding the comprehensive plan, the transportation master plan and the wastewater reclamation plan, found that the, the roadways can handle the proposed use there and wastewater can be provided and there will be capacity to serve the proposed development at that time. R1 zoning designation is consistent with the surrounding areas. We received no comments from any other departments or outside agencies. So at this time, I would stand for any questions.
Questions for Tavis on this one? Seeing none, does the proponent wish to speak on this?
Mike Curry, do you want to speak, Mike?
Name for the record, please.
Mike Curry, representing Big Sky Capital. I don't have anything to add to staff's comments, but would stand for any questions if you have any.
Questions, Mike? Thanks, Mike. Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
Then I'm going to assume there's no rebuttal and with that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
I would move to approve the Chase Acres Annexation File Number A-17-06 with the zone of R1.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Before we get into the last public hearing, for the, I didn't see minutes from the P and Z meeting on these public hearings. We have in the past, is that, I meant to ask, is that a change? We typically will have minutes. If it's a public hearing, it's been before P and Z, we will see there are minutes incorporated.
Let me look at that because they should have been there.
Okay, I did not see them.
If they're not there, they should have been.
Okay, right. Okay, I just wonder if it would have been, was a change, so.
Also, if I may, one minor, I guess, improvement to the staff presentation that I would kind of like to see is when there's no comments received, it'd be nice to see from which departments they were solicited and when. So at least that way, everybody knows, okay, we actually reached out rather than like somebody dropped the ball and didn't reach out and we got nothing back. I know, I know they were reached out to, but at least then it would, would make it very transparent.
Different agencies and, yeah. Okay, good, thanks. Last item up is the Satchewich, hopefully I pronounced it, Satchewich Annexation. Lindsay's presenting. Open the public hearing. Did I say it right? Satchewich?
Satchewich? I think so. Everybody said it differently. Is it, Sack, Sackwitz?
I was close.
Lindsay King, Planner One, City of Post Falls. Mayor Jacobson, council members, I'm here to present the Sackwitz Annexation, case file A-17-07 for Louis G. Satchwitz Living Trust. The applicant, Cordillane Group LLC. The requested action is city council is being asked to review and approve the annexation request of approximately two acres of two separate one-acre parcels. request of approximately two acres of two separate one-acre parcels to be zoned single-family residential, so R1 zone. On December 12th, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation for the single-family R1 zone, and was obviously forwarded to city council. In the red hatching, you'll see the subject parcels. There's two parcels, north and south. They're roughly on the corner of Horse Haven and Saranga. So you have some, it's a small county pocket there surrounding it. It's, like I said, it's approximately two acres, two one-acre parcels. It's currently agricultural suburban within Cootney County. The proposed land use would be single-family residential. Water will be provided by Ross Point Water District and sewer by the city of Post Falls. While these services are now available, they cannot be guaranteed for future development if they decide to come in 30 years later and say, oh, we want to develop. It is within the city of Post Falls area of city impact and contiguous with city limits. The property is consistent with the future land use map, which you'll see in just a moment. And it's consistent with the policies found within the Comprehensive Transportation and Wastewater Reclamation Master Plans. Those are all outlined within the staff reports. And the R1 zoning designation is consistent with surrounding areas. This is a current zoning map of the area. As you can see, the parcel is hatched in the black markings. To the south and the west, you have a single-family residential R1 zones. In the middle there, it's kind of a pale, pale, pale yellow, and that's still a county pocket. To the north, you have our smart code zoning SC3 and SC4, and those are currently single-family subdivisions. This is our future land use map for the proposed annexation, and as you can see, it's residential zoning for the foreseeable area. We received no outside comments, or no comments from outside agencies. P&amp;Z did have one public comment listed in the staff report. And I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Question for Lindsay.
I have a quick question. You said that the requested zoning is R1, so we're not going to put smart code in there to be consistent with the rest of that that was colored purple before?
No, the applicant requested the R1 single-family zoning.
Any questions? Does the applicant wish to speak tonight?
Does the applicant wish to speak?
Mike Curry with the Courtland Group, LLC. I don't have any additional information to add, in addition to staff. Stand for any questions?
Questions, Mike? Thanks, Mike. Assuming no rebuttal then, close the public hearing.
Further comments?
We have no comments.
No, thank you. Why am I missing that tonight?
It's Tuesday, man.
I know, it's Tuesday. I'm sorry. So, I'm doing a do-over on that gavel. So there are no public comments?
No public comments.
Now I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Good thing you got your people, keep me out of trouble tonight.
I would move to approve the Satchewich Annexation File Number A-17-07 with the zone of R1.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is unfinished business. Tonight, we have none. Citizens' issues. This section of the agenda reserved for citizens wishing to testify before the council on a non-agenda item. And if you care to speak, come forward, give your name.
My name is Daniel Finley, and I'd like to thank the city council for holding this and to say that I'm here because I'm from Indiana originally. I've lived in Idaho for eight years, this area for almost four years now, and I just love living in the city of Post Falls. I, I think I'm in good company when I say that, when I read in the newspaper that we're due to triple our population in roughly 20 years to 90,000, or, that's, I think that's good news, but it is, it is a little bit scary, especially seeing all these different R1 zoning areas going in. I think one of the things that makes Post Falls so wonderful to live in, aside just the people that are here, is, is the feeling that you're so close to the country, you know? We have people that have, you know, ranches here, and have wells and cattle and whatnot. And my, I, I come from suburbia, I'm a suburban rat from Indianapolis suburbs, and really hope someplace as wonderful as Post Falls doesn't become that, but that is what I see it becoming. A lot of these, and I'd like to put before city council the fact that we need, I know there's a lot of opposition to it in the, in the public in Post Falls, but we do need high-density population housing. We need more, less R1 zones and more zones that allow for higher-density occupation. And I'm, it's for the sake of Post Falls, really, in order to be close to, in order for there to be a Prairie to be close to, the Rathron Prairie, we have to start to build up, not out. We have to start to realize that as people move to Post Falls, the price of real estate is going to go up faster than the wages are going to go up. So when you put in these R1 developments that have homes that are typically between $200,000 to $300,000, and sometimes, you know, closer to $160,000 if it's in bad condition, that's out of reach for a lot of people who meet, who make the average wage in Cootney County, which is only $37,000. And I fear, I know, if we continue to develop with these R1-zoned subdivisions and housing developments, you're going to price the people of Post Falls out of Post Falls. You're going to take the Rathron Prairie away from this community, which I think is an integral part of our community. Not, not to say that we shouldn't be, I mean, all, all these, all these, all these zones we've seen today are consistent with areas around them. But I'm looking further out, down the future, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road, we need to start to think about building upwards, not outwards, in order to preserve the community that we do have, and I want to see that preserved, you know? Whether we like it or not, we're between Courtland and Spokane, and whether we like it or not, our population is going to go up. We can't stop it. But I'd like to see us get out ahead of it, before we lose some of the things that make our community so unique. That's why I put that before the council, for you to consider in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Let me just make a couple of comments. Number one, the, during the election, population growth to 90,000 was a huge issue. That was never the city's goal, that was never the city's plan. That's an independent consulting firm who used historical data and projections. That was theirs. We are looking at infrastructure, making sure we have infrastructure available as we do grow, but it is not our goal to get to 90,000, number one. Number two, as far as the number of multifamily, I'm going to need to change my number, but when I started looking at the numbers to present probably six, eight months ago, we were in the process of building or already had approved 579 additional multifamily units. And since then, several more projects have come in. So I, I think we are seeing our fair share, or maybe more than our fair share, of the multifamily units coming in. That being said, I agree with your contention that I don't want to see the Prairie gone either. So it is a balancing act, but I do want you to know, number one, we're building quite a few multifamily, and number two, it is not our goal to hit that 90,000.
And I reckon, I don't want to say that it is your goal. I know it's not. And I, I'm glad to hear that there's so many multifamily unit developments going in. But, yeah, I, one of my jobs, I drive for Domino's, so I've been to all the multifamily units many, many times. Not a single one goes over three stories high. Most of them aren't very space-efficient when you look at it, and I appreciate, and I'm not trying to, you know, say, oh, my goodness, I'm the city council, because I, you know, I don't. But, three stories high isn't very vertical.
That's true.
It's more horizontal than vertical, so.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to come in and visit with us tonight. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none. Next item up is new business, and we've got four items. Is everybody okay to keep going, or you want to take five minutes?
I'm getting good.
You good? Okay, let's go out. First item under new business is the City Link routes. Rob Paulus, and Rob, if I can, you may mention it, but we did, part of this discussion was predicated on the desire of health and welfare to relocate from Courtland out to Post Falls. And we received a phone call today that apparently their estimates, the bids came in too high, so at this point, they are not moving. Now, that being said, we debated whether or not we should discuss this, but I think it goes beyond just health and welfare. So we're going to have maybe a reduced discussion, but a discussion nonetheless.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. As mentioned, this has become more informative in nature and more of an update than seeking specific direction from you, since health and welfare is not looking at the specific area. Back in November, health and welfare had approached Administrator Andrade to look at whether or not a D route or an additional route could be provided to the City Link system. The reason for this was health and welfare has a lot of their clientele in the city of Post Falls, and they wanted to be closer to the people that they serve. Historically, City Link did serve out into the western portions of the city of Post Falls. Up on the map, you'll see an image showing, in blue is the existing City Link route. It has been changed recently to include some areas down along Third Avenue, which would be the senior center, a stop near the food bank, and then also a stop near City Hall. Back up until 2012, there were stops out near the Riverbend Park, Camelot Estates, and even out towards the Cisco and Walmart areas. Even with health and welfare looking at delaying their plans on finding a location in the area, there is still interest amongst numerous businesses out in the western Post Falls area. In your package, you had a number of letters of support for establishing that D route. In addition to that, staff has received two, two letters of support today. One of them was from Camelot Estates, where Stop used to be located, and also one from the NIC Workforce Training Center. There is regular interest in the fact that a lot of people living out there are looking for ways on helping to be more affordable for them to get to businesses within our community, to jobs, to doctors, and that type of investment. They see that by having the route out towards the west, western Post Falls areas, it opens up more opportunities for them. City Link did an estimate and identified that to provide a D route was estimated around $170,000 for Monday through Friday service. If that was put in place, grant monies would cover about half the cost of that. If you wanted to add Saturday service to that, that would be an additional $27,218 per year, estimated. The city's estimated portion, if the city was to take up that entire cost of providing a D route today, would be around $112,000 to $113,000, and there would probably be an additional $30,000 of cost on top of that to handle the initial procurement of a bus. What staff would like to do would be to continue to move forward on analyzing how to incorporate a D route into the city of Post Falls, opening up more service to the western Post Falls, as well as some of the northern areas near Tulamore, Fieldstone, and to work with City Link in finding what are some ways to better finance and make this realistic, and then bring it to you in a workshop for consideration in a future budget. Stand for any questions that you might have.
I'd like to add a comment, if I could. You know, I'm disappointed that the routes to the west were discontinued. I would like to see them reestablished. I did receive a call today from Jackland Land Company, and as you all saw in your packets, there were several letters of support from the different businesses out in that area. And Tom Stolzer, CEO out at Jackland Land, called me today and said that they had a board meeting, and they feel this goes, this is an issue that goes beyond whether or not health and welfare relocates out there. And that being the case, they have talked and have pledged that if we opt to go forward, they will, at least for the first year, provide some financial assistance on this. They're stepping up and doing what they think needs to be done to service the people in the Riverbend Park out there. So again, I just wanted to share the fact that they are willing to step up and assist, number one, and number two, that it's their opinion, and I would tend to agree, that it's, goes beyond whether or not health and welfare relocates. I just wanted to share those.
Mayor, I have a question for you. So, do you think that the Saturday route should be there as well?
Haven't decided. I'm up in the air on that one.
Yeah, well, that's very nice of the Jacklins, as always, as stepping up, yes.
Question, just maybe give me a little history on it. Was the D route dropped because of financial reasons or lack of ridership, or what?
It was, it was dropped due to a lack of appropriate finances to cover everything that was being done with the City Link system. There was significant, and I utilized the word significant, but City Link says that there was several riders out in that area, regular riders, and that they were a significant number of people, and that the loss of service, they hear from those individuals still on a regular basis, that when are you going to bring service back out there? I have received some of those calls myself, mainly from the Camelot area and then out near the Flying J restaurant truck stop.
Can I come to the air?
I think you guys covered it. I was going to ask about the D route, too, and then I was curious if anybody else wrote checks besides the Jacklins, because I mean, it's, it's one thing to send in a letter and say, yeah, we need to have this. I'd love to have it, too. I'd love to have it go everywhere, so.
And that's one of the areas where staff moving forward and starting to look at the budgetary process, we can also identify, are there other stakeholders out in that area who would want to form some type of partnership and work with the city as well as City Link?
Cool.
I know Jody standing, can we listen, take comment from Jody, wasn't?
I think it's at your pleasure at this point. If you want to hear from her, that's fine, but it's, it's not a hearing.
No, I just want to make a clarification.
Please, name for the record, please.
She's just talking to Rob.
Oh. Thank you, Jody.
Jody wanted to make a clarification. In the staff report that we had, we had the $170,000. That included Monday through Saturday service.
Okay, thank you, Jody.
I apologize for the error in that.
And I had one question. I mentioned to Warren and Jason, I'm going to give you information, but Shelley gave us a memo, and on the first page, it talked about the city agrees to provide funding, I believe it's for fiscal 2018, in the amount of $34,168. And then she provided us a table, and I can't get the numbers to tie out. So I'm going to, if you will, I'll give that to you, and just so we can get that, make sure that the numbers are accurate. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, there's the sheet.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll get clarification to you on that.
And if you look on page one, it referenced the $34,000.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to say, I think that a D route would really enhance our educational facilities that are out in the Riverbend Park. You know, I, I think there's a lot of people that could utilize that bus transportation for the U of I, for NIC workforce, for the police academy out there, for the businesses as well. So I just think it's a necessary thing. The funding is obviously the issue.
And it'd be great to have whatever you're going to do to show, show the numbers, but as far as whether that is necessary, is really a moot point. It needs to be out there, it needs to, it needs to be back, although, did it go to Riverbend before? I know it went out like towards Walmart and Cabellis.
It did go out by the Riverbend area. It did not go into the Riverbend Commerce Park.
Yeah, so this would be, I think, a bonus.
Al, did you have a comment?
I guess it just goes back to what I was saying. I mean, I'd love to see it, too, but it's, you know, where are we going to get the money?
Yeah.
I guess when it comes around budget time, that's going to be one of the things on our plate. Do we up taxes to pay for this, and how many citizens really truly benefit from it, when we're going to ask $37,000 to pay for it? So I guess that's going to be the big question.
And it's off-proportionate, you know, based on the different cities and the county.
Right.
And who pays a fair share?
Right.
So it's something that has to be looked at.
Yep. Lots of, lots of questions, lots of moving parts, but good information.
Is that a key which you need, Rob? I think there's interest to go forward.
Yes, we will continue to work on that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thanks, appreciate it, Rob. Thanks, Jody. Next item up is the new personnel policy. Teresa Bender.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Teresa Bender, Human Resources Director. I am, before I, I get started on personnel policy, I wanted to preface my remarks by saying that, realized after we had submitted this to you, that there, we had lost some of the changes that we had made back in February of 2017. So when we do bring forward a new personnel policy for the 2018 adoption, we will be putting those changes back into the 2018 personnel policy. Okay? So I, I submitted a list of major policy changes for 2018, which included linking up the articles and sections for easier navigation. We did a multiple edit and format changes throughout the policy, which didn't significantly[1778.24] We did multiple edit and format changes throughout the policy, which didn't significantly change the policy itself, other than the listed articles, Article 4, Section 409, for the performance and salary practices. We updated performance appraisal periods. We clarified hiring practices, clarified what circumstances and how pay increases are implemented. Under Article 5, we also addressed overnight travel, and we are moving to a, we are suggesting we move to a per diem. And requesting permission for travel was clarified, including the use of the city card and in what circumstances we might be able to use the city card for per diem purchases. We also expanded Section 514 in this world of sexual harassment and unlawful discrimination, which has kind of come to the forefront of many of our TV headlines these days. We did update some of those, and we clarified the reporting procedures for that as well. Article 7, under our Salary Administration Program, we provided purpose, scope, and policy statements. So with that, did you have any questions regarding personnel policy changes that were made?
I'd like to thank you and on the earlier presentation on the code changes, I think it had been asked a couple of weeks ago that we saw red line versions, so we knew what was changed, and both, in both cases, that was included, so thank you. That helps us know what's being changed. We appreciate that.
You bet.
Any comments, Teresa?
I have a question. What's the purple? I saw a lot of things highlighted in purple. I wasn't sure, is that?
Oh, those are actual, when you go online, those are links that will actually take you to the particular form that you want.
Okay. I kind of wondered if that was it. Are we making a decision tonight? This is just kind of?
No, this is just new business. In case you had any questions regarding the personnel policy, we'll bring it back at the next council meeting for adoption.
And that will include, will that include the other changes?
Yes, it will. And I can certainly provide those red lines in both policies, if you would like, as well, again.
Yeah, I guess I didn't need to see the whole, the clean copy, if you will.
There's a lot to it.
But thanks for doing that. Appreciate all the work.
Any questions? Linda Prender, she's going to read it all. She has read it all.
I can't read stuff on a computer, sorry.
It's good for insomnia.
It's also good when you're walking alone, it gives you a weapon, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Next item up is the state revolving fund loan officer, John Beecham and Danielle Quaid.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Beecham, Utilities Manager for City Post Falls. I am here to present a loan offer, and as part of my presentation, Danielle Quaid, our city's bond counsel, will be able to provide a little bit of information that I am not qualified to present on how the bond process actually works. This is the first of several presentations talking about our tertiary treatment upgrade that will be over the next several years. First thing I'll talk about is the timeline of that project. We'll get into the actual loan offer itself. And again, as I mentioned, we'll have some information on the bond process. And then obviously, questions throughout, if you have them, or at the end. I've seen this slide before. The red is the current step we're on, on our compliance schedule within our NPDES permit. This is issued to us by EPA. The next to-do item is by November 2019, we need to design and award a bid for the construction of upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. Things that would be entailed in this upgrade are outlined in the 2013 wastewater master plan. Those include installing a tertiary membrane treatment, that's the big item. Also included in that is to upgrade our existing secondary treatment system, add UV disinfection for reclaimed water, and to upgrade support facilities, for example, our SCADA system. This is a breakdown of costs. This is current as of January 2017, which is last year. This is the proposed cost I sent to DEQ when I requested the loan with a letter of interest. So this was the best information the city had at the time we sent it in. I'll get into how we have some flexibility with that in a second. I mentioned the different elements of the project. Those total about $28.5 million. We estimate in our facility plan that we have about $4.3 million in cash toward these facilities today. Therefore, my requested loan amount to DEQ was the balance of that amount. And again, that's in, matches with our facility plan financial model. I should say, there have been some changes since 2017, and one very specific change, as an example, we brought a budget amendment to you asking to use some money and purchase the animal control facility and turn that into a lab. That was originally envisioned to be part of this project. We're hoping that that number of $775,000 would be a smaller number now. We have the flexibility not to use really any of this money if we don't need it, or to use up to that authorized $24.1 million. Timeline of this, we're here today in January talking about financing. In February, we'll be negotiating a design contract for the project. The selected consultant for that will help us with the design, as well as the pre-procurement of any difficult technologies such as membranes. Summer, fall of 2019, we need to finalize the design and bid the project, and then in November 2019, we need to award that construction contract. Our loan offer specifically from DEQ is, like I said, for $24 million. Interest rate is 2.75. Of that 1% is the loan cost, and the other is actually interest. It's a 20-year term. The value is whatever we submit to them up to that cost for reimbursement. So it could be, if we need $10 million for the project, the value of the loan could be $10 million instead of that 24. And again, when I was submitting this, I wanted to make sure the money was available for the project, not come back and ask for another loan down the road. The loan offer requires compliance with several federal rules. Those are Davis Bacon or prevailing wages be paid to the construction workers, as well as American iron and steel procurement rules, and that's for the products that actually go into the plant upgrade. At this point, I'll turn it over to Danielle to talk briefly about the bond process.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Danielle Quaid with Holly Troxel. I've been before, many of you before, throughout this process that we started back in 2012. As John was discussing, you know, this is the second phase of your project. The first phase was getting to the secondary treatment, and this DEQ loan agreement that's before you tonight looks a lot like what you've seen in the past. We did some work prior to make sure that all of your ordinances matched up, and they all had the same requirements, and that your bonds for this wastewater system, which have been needed on an ongoing basis, would all be issued on parity and in compliance with the DEQ loan agreement requirements, but also in compliance with market requirements in case you sought a different financing mechanism. So this part of the process is a little different than a traditional bond financing in that DEQ just wants you to approve their loan agreement, loan offer at this time. At that point, you'll be able to start spending money on the project and drawing down the loan, but the bond and the corresponding ordinance is not actually issued until you complete the project and finalize that loan amount. As John said, if the project ends up coming in less expensive, then your bond amount will be less, and that's why DEQ does that second step at the end. So this DEQ loan agreement, we have reviewed. It is compliant with your current wastewater ordinance, and it really just enables you to, in the way that you did before, you know, construct, you know, design and construct your project and draw down from DEQ loan proceeds to do that. I would point out that, you know, it's an amazing interest rate, and it also comes with the additional benefit with DEQ that it's not tax exempt. That makes Jason very happy. There's less compliance with IRS requirements. So you kind of get the benefit of that really great rate without additional burden on your staff, and we're pretty lucky to have the benefit of this program. So the resolution's very simple. It just says that you approve the loan agreement, you approve the, you know, delegate to John and Jason, you know, what they need to do to move forward with the, with that agreement with DEQ. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Couple of questions. Interest rates, 175, loan fee at 1%, 275. Why are they breaking it out as an interest rate and a loan fee? Isn't it basically just the interest fee?
Yes.
Or interest rate?
Yes, it is just the interest rate. It's just the way that they internally, they internally pay themselves a loan fee that's separate from what they, how they allocate the rest of the interest cost, but it is confusing.
Well, further on in the document, it stated that they may charge a loan fee, and if they do, they will reduce the interest rate accordingly.
Yes.
Second question. So we start the design, you start drawing money on this, we start construction in 2019. This interest rate is good, even though we may not really need the dollars until 2019?
Yes. They hold the interest rate, they lock it. It really is, especially in an environment where we think the rates are going to start to go up, they already are starting to go up at this point. It's a tremendous benefit, and like I said, without this additional compliance obligation that comes with traditional tax-exempt bonds.
It amazes me that they're willing to lock a rate, 275 now, when we may not need it for another year and a half.
Well, and on $24 million, that's very material.
You mean, we don't have a banker around here? A better rate than that?
Let me give you a bid. There's no way, especially on a taxable. I mean, for a tax-exempt rate, that would be good.
Right.
Taxable rate, that's amazing.
But you're not going to get it fixed for 30 years, in any place other than going full out to the market where you have to do the disclosure, and you have compliance related to that, and you have compliance related to the tax benefits. It's really a great program.
You say 30, it's 20, right?
This is 20, but you, yeah.
Yeah. And we've got the capacity with fee structure, et cetera, to have funds to repay this as we move forward?
This matches up nicely with our financial model, is the way I would answer that.
Okay.
That predates me, and I haven't looked at the intricacies of it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Danielle. Any other questions for either?
I got a question for John. John, there has been some changes in the political world. Do you see any changes in EPA that may not make this a requirement or could change this requirement?
I'm going out a little bit on a limb to answer that, but I would say this is within our permit, which has been through as many public processes as you can be. We would have to somehow apply for a new permit and get new terms. I don't see it as a likely avenue.
Okay. Just curious.
Any other questions?
Is Jason happy?
Good.
Okay. He was sleeping. He's so happy, isn't he?
He's good.
Thank you both. As I said, that's, I read the rate and was amazed, so appreciate the work on that.
Thank you very much.
And we do have a resolution coming up later on that, so we don't have to make a decision now?
That's correct.
Good. Thank you very much. Next item up is water system improvements. Andrew Arbeany, Project Manager, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Andrew Arbeany, Utilities Project Manager. I have a short presentation this evening, presenting on the water system improvements and seeking council's approval for a design contract with TO engineers for improvements to our water system. These water system improvements were identified in the draft 2016 master plan, also discussed at the November 21st workshop with City Council. So on this map, in that circle, I highlighted the four projects in particular that is included in this design contract with TO engineers. These are individual projects within, all within close proximity to each other, and very close to Spokane Street. The projects are from Mullen Avenue down to Sixth Avenue. These projects will improve the water system overall, in particular, improving fire flow. We'll be adding or installing new fire hydrants, so it improves, makes improvements to the water system. The total contract cost with TO engineers is $54,229.75. With a 5% contingency, the total requested amount this evening is for $56,941.23. This time, I will stand for any questions.
I just don't see anything on the agenda where we're approving that.
Yet.
I see it under new business, but I don't see a...
Yeah, I know Shelley's memo had said that if approved, would sign the contract. Would we need that noticed on?
So I see it's in the packet. Let me look at the agenda again. I think it's covered under the D. I think it's broad enough to cover that.
Okay. So you just need a motion to approve the Water System Improvements Project?
I do. I was going to see if there's any comments first.
It's the TO contract.
I was just kind of confused the same way, like, what are we approving?
Well, if you look at the agenda, it stated in Shelley's memo, it stated that if approved... His memo shows a task involves the cost not to exceed $54,229.75 with the option of, for 5% contingency, and if approved, the mayor shall sign the contract.
Okay. Good.
Okay, so like move to approve to have the mayor sign the contract of the Water System Improvements Project.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
I know we talked about that project and the amount in a workshop. Let there so go, so.
Amazing, we had two.
Administrative staff reports, do we have any tonight?
Have none.
Would you like to?
Orders is resolutions.
I'm just seeing if he's awake. You have a resolution tonight.
Move to approve the resolution, state revolving fund loan offer.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
Joe wants to be mayor.
Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I'd like to blame it, my lack of following the agenda on something, but other than the fact that I'm just not very smart, maybe we'll just leave it at that.
Blame it on me.
Chief Knight, are there any administrative staff reports now?
There are none.
Anybody? No, I won't ask. I have no council comments tonight, any mayor, no mayor comments tonight. Are there any council comments?
I'm hungry.
I got, I got. Good new mayor.
One thing that Mr. Finley left, but do we have restrictions on height? I mean, as far as how high buildings can go? We do, right?
Yeah.
But I mean...
It was 40 feet.
If somebody came here with a high-rise project, we'd still listen to them, right?
I wish changing.
Okay.
Well, we actually have some already approved down in Post Falls Landing. Remember, we did, was it, I don't know, variances or something like that for higher buildings than that, right, John?
Yeah, down at the landings, it's approved for 85 feet, and that was carried over on the original PUD, and even when it went to Smart Code as part of its amendments, it went, that carried forward. But the base R3 is 45 feet for height limitation.
Another, I would ask the council, I guess I was a little overwhelmed when I found, when I opened my packet, and it was 427 pages. Luckily, I opened it on Friday, because if I'd have opened it today, I don't think I would have got through it all, but is there any way to, like, put that in the byline, that this is one big packet that's coming up, something like that, so that, because I was, you know, we went from like 13 pages to 427.
We can do that for you.
Thank you very much.
It's a whole lot of skimming this weekend.
I didn't want you to have to do that if nobody else cared, but...
No, that actually would be awful.
And I had recommended this before, too, on the, you know, there's a short agenda and a long agenda, which is the bonus one that you're talking about, but where somehow it broken out on the ones that are very paper extensive are the, you know...
Checks.
PUDs and all of that, when you get into the zoning things. If those could be separated, so you can see different files, but yeah, I agree, you know, opening those giant files is...
But I'm confused, because if we get the long agenda, it includes all those and all the specific information.
It's broken out like this, isn't it?
Yeah, mine doesn't come up like that.
You can break them up.
I also wanted to know if we were going to hear from Dave, because we heard it from every other department tonight. Dave, you got anything? You want any money?
I told Shelley I would behave myself while she was gone.
Do not give him the chance. Get away from the mic. Anyone else?
I just, real quick, just have a quick question for you guys when we're done, so don't run off. John and Warren.
We do not, I guess, I'm going to make a comment. I want to thank you guys. I don't know why I was so distracted and following, it was right in front of me. Maybe I should have put my glasses on more, but thanks for helping me out. We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
So the next motion is?
Adjourn.